All of a sudden.
Yeah, and when the str- the, the full striping package comes online, it, it'll make a little bit more sense. And it does have to be phased in. The concrete work happens first and then the striking will follow, but.
I'll try to do that.
They have signs up now.
I know. It's, it's, it's completely on me.
Sliding Rock two, you heard a little bit about, um, we're hoping to go to permitting this month on that. And then obviously second reading for that RTP grant, really excited to get that off the road. The neighborhood connector spurs are still underway. We have about a thirty percent, uh, set of plans that are under review. And, um, this is part of kind of a larger look at neighborhood connectivity for the extension project. And these are the first three that we're tackling, provide connectivity to Nickel Town, to Gower, and then an extension of the Verde connection that we're working on as well.
Have we gotten to the, the ones after the first three yet? I mean, I remember the long list, but there's no prioritized.
So these, yeah, we're saying on getting these, um, all the way through to com- to completion, meaning permitting. And then we have AE Comm on board to, to help us with, uh, construction and stuff. To make sure that they're kind of following the plans. And then at that point, once we kind of break ground on, on construction, I feel like it would be pertinent that we can kind of keep looking at what neighborhood connections would happen from there.
I think we would be looking to, um, city council to help us with that prioritization. That's something that we have coming forward for you all. Kalen, when do you expect those three to be completed? Those neighborhoods first?
So I'm, I'm hoping that we can break ground, um, by around the first of the year. We can kind of work this fall to get, get through, all the way through the rest of the design package and permitting. And then we'll be in a position early next year to hopefully begin construction.
And you're thinking the three that, the three you're counting is the one at, the one at CBS thereabouts to get to where Pro Source is.
Yes.
Or no, I mean, the one at, is it Webster or Hackley? I can't remember where we landed. Ackley, then CBS, and you count the Verde crossing is the third.
Yeah, so, but, uh, the Ackley one has actually been shifted to Glen Street.
Okay.
Um, so the Glen Street Crossing, Industrial and Wait is the one that, that the CBS and then at Henderson.
Oh, okay. So we have one at Henderson.
Yep.
Glen one at Henderson. Okay, so it's three plus Verde.
That's right.
Okay.
Yep.
Have we done anything about lighting on the, on the Church Street?
So that's, that's part of what we're working on right now. So we have, uh, a couple of co-ops that we're, I'm working on a lighting solution for that. But we're looking at, um, basically the, the existing fence there will be pushed out as far as possible. DOT is pretty big stickler about what we can and can't do against their, uh, their, their bridge supports there. So we're not going to touch that. We're not going to do any retaining walls. Um, and that way we can kind of keep the approvals at a district level and not have to push it to Columbia. But then we'll have some screening that takes place and then some lighting as well to kind of increase safety. The Cleveland Park pedestrian bridge is still, um, still under design. Uh, we kind of navigated the Clomar process. We, we did determine that we were able to, uh, do this with a no impact. And so that Clomar process is being, uh, kind of removed from the scope of work. And we're hopeful that we can move this, move this forward a little bit faster than the previously planned. So this will be, if you've ridden the pa- ridden the paperclip, um, and how it connects to the zoo parking lot, this is going to be, uh, ten times better than the way it functions right now. It'll, it'll, uh, get rid of two at-grade crossings on Lake Hurst. And it'll provide a direct connection from the Richland Way Tunnel directly to the zoo parking lot side.
So that eight hundred K is that?
That's a ru-
After we, you, you've gotten rid of that process?
That's a, that's after, so that, that's a, that's a rough estimate. I'm still waiting on full engineer cost estimate for that. But that's a, that's a ballpark estimate for, for what we think it's going to cost. Cancer Survivors Boardwalk Rehab, as everybody knows, the tread surface, um, since we took ownership of that in twenty sixteen from CSPA, um, has, hasn't fared too well. And so we're, we're looking at a full replacement of that tread surface. Our park staff has been doing a great job of replacing those boards as needed to make sure we don't have any huge safety concerns. But we are looking at a full, um, rip up and redo using some best practices for sealing the wood and also skid resistance on that. So we've been working hand in hand with CSPA to make sure that the aesthetics of it match and that, um, that, uh, we can kind of mitigate a full closure of that. We're planning to kind of stack that against, uh, weekend hours and any holidays or special events to make sure that we're not impacting anything they may have had planned.
This fall, twenty twenty-three?
Yeah, we're actually, we're pulling together a bid package now. So I would imagine we would be out to put it to bid in the next month.
So, so what are we doing about the, the existing undamaged sections to make sure that they don't get to that same point?
They're actually ripping out the sections that have, um, degraded to the point and putting down new.
No, I'm saying, okay, so.
I'm sorry.
There, there's some sections which have degraded and absolutely have to be replaced.
Yes.
Then there's some sections which haven't degraded yet. Are we doing anything to make sure that those sections that haven't degraded yet? To slow that down or?
Current, like as of right now, before replacement happens?
Period. I mean, do we have plans?
Full replacement.
So we're going to do a full replacement?
Yeah, the full.
We're replacing every tread on that.
The entire tread surface.
Well, I, it seems like it might be a process to get, are they going to take those plaques up sometime in early fall?
Yeah, so CSPA actually has a really in-depth, um, tracking system of where those are placed. So they can actually let people know how to go and find the plaque that they've, they've put on there. And so they're going to handle taking those up and they'll put those away so that we're not responsible for them. And then they'll handle putting them back, make sure they're put back in the right place. And then really exciting, um, the skate park and pump track project, which, um.
The Will Brazington project.
Was announced with the, with the airport district, uh, planning study a couple of weeks ago.
Just to concept, just to clarify, just as a recommendation from the plan.
That's right.
It's one of the options.
One of the options, that's right. And so this, uh, we are, um, looking at a piece of property that is on airport property. It is part of their larger parcel. And so that would be a piece of property that we could develop, um, could develop a skate park and pump track. If we were to develop, um, we would be looking at some goals for fifteen thousand square feet for each of those. That fifteen thousand square foot mark is really important because for pump tracks, that's kind of the threshold for the Red Bull, uh, race series to be able to come to town would be an economic driver for, for that amenity. And also at a certain threshold, it gets the, um, regional folks coming in from, from out of state to want to travel specifically to, to visit a park like this.
So how far did we get, if you go back to that one, back in twenty nineteen-ish, late twenty nineteen? You know, we all gathered at David Hellem's and talked about pump track.
Yes.
And what I recall from that were there were two different ki- types of surfaces, one lower maintenance than the other. And size considerations.
That's right.
And then that eventually went nowhere. So did we lose, did we, do we have lessons that we took away from that in terms of budgeting forward and what's involved in the maintenance of it to make sure we're bringing those lessons forward? As i- if it rises to the surface from the study, is it?
Yep, so the, the, as far as the maintenance goes, um, we've always, the goal has always been to be a paved pump track. And so the difference of the two surfaces would be an unpaved or dirt pump track, which is what is, is available locally right now, to a paved pump track, which has a much lower maintenance capacity. Um, and so we, we were then and we are now looking at the paved option. Now, the, the project that was, that was happening in twenty nineteen was a different project than this. That was a neighborhood scale contract. And so that fifteen thousand square foot would, would have been way too large if in on, in any of our community parks. We were looking at an existing park facility. Think of an expansion of what our playground offerings were at that time. This is more of a regional draw, um, facility. And so two similar but very different projects.
Um, well, I hope I'm wrong, but I remember back at the ti- at the, in the day, that allocation was a district dividend of a quarter of a million dollars to do that small scale. So this one is much larger scale and we're a few years down the road. To me, it is a great opportunity for a public-private partnership. A lot of people, a lot of businesses interested in this.
We, we already have.
We'd love to share the cost.
I believe we already have maybe a million dollars in private money. And there's definitely a support network of some people who can deliver, I think, on that. I think, I think the main thing is to, I would think you've already been keeping them informed, keeping them on board. And in order to, they have ownership in this. And sooner they can get out and start fundraising, the better.
Yeah.
You know, this kind of reminds me of a few years ago when we started, first coming to, talking about the Swamp Rabbit Trail. I mean, it was so novel for the city. We, council members and others, county council and city went on trips to see what bike and walking trail looked like. Because people really had never seen that in Greenville. Uh, this is another one like that. We saw it recently in Birmingham, Alabama. It, it behooves everybody to go see some of these, um, and what's happening there. It, it has so many different layers to it. And, um, and the other part of it that, uh, I think is exciting is the tie to programs like the Next Program. There, there's a whole community of, and that whole innovation technology star, there's just certain things that in communities that attract those people. And this comes up again and again and again in meetings and breakout groups, both having a pump track and having a skate park. So generational thing too, and not, not many of us in this room are part of that generation, if you will. Seth maybe wants to stall, thinks he is. But, um, it's a, it's a different kind of.
Kickflip with the best of the nuts.
So it has an economic development impact of the recreation and so, and probably more than we can imagine in terms of creative people who are attracted to these kind of things.
We do have a very passionate community of people that are very.
I just think there's a lot of opportunities to partner on it.
Yes, we really are. Absolutely, yeah. And also you don't want to, we can't do this without those people participating. They have to be there to say, yeah, this is what we're talking about. Because we may not get it right without their participation. We want their money, but we also want their expertise and experience.
Are they typically revenue generators? Do you charge admission to these?
That's one of the things that we'll be discussing is what the best kind of, uh, overall package would look like there. Open to the public and, and then obviously charging would be.
Could, could Tara address that? Because then you've been, y'all been going around the country looking at these things. Forgot about.
We've seen both. Went to North Charleston and made do charge, um, then, and so to Birmingham. So it just depends on.
Kind of like ice, kind of like ice skating?
Yes. Yep.
Oh, really? Yeah, that's a good, that's a good example.
Probably so. Yeah, we've been talking to, um, other cities.
What other cities around? Just to give us an idea.
Well, we'd like to go to Gastonia. That probably would be our next.
As you guys know.
Gastonia has one, yeah?
Pump track or a skate park?
Uh, pump track.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah.
I was gonna say Asheville's a skate park.
Yeah. Yeah.
Asheville's on our list as well. They just raided their skate park.
Ash, well, Ashville, uh-huh, okay. So Asheville, Gastonia, Birmingham, uh, where else?
We went to North Charleston.
North Charleston.
And the one in Columbia, they have a skate park, pump track right against, uh, Mida Square for similar to what we're looking at as well. That's, that's open and free. That's part of a larger park. Quite a great option.
And we don't have it on this slide because it might be one of the big ideas that we're going to ask you about. But if, the, the airport plan also recommended, Kalen's showing the three, four mile trail spur, but also recommended an airport loop that would tie into the Swamp Rabbit Trail, which could be really exciting. Um, in, in terms of just how we reimagine this entire area, um, especially from a recreational standpoint. Um, and I, I had to take a second to brag on our own Austin Rutherford because that was his idea during his graduate thesis.
Airport student?
Yep.
That was his. That you could get off.
Yeah, I know. I've seen the plan.
It is great. I've rode, I've rode the route and it's, it's a, it's an excellent, just get, got great vistas of the airport.
We, we do this, right? We have, we have an east side loop, then you have, if we have the west, in Pelton Street, West End Village area, one way or another, whether it's a railroad property or, or not, just going down Pelton Street.
Yep.
I think that would be a good balance to what we're doing.
And things like this are ways to, you know, the, the, the downtown airport operates as a, as a, you know, an economic engine for the city. But at, using the land that's not being used right now for recreation and enjoyment, kind of a macro level of runway cafe and the Take Flight Mini Golf, help bring community to this parcel, which is, you know, the biggest lot of land that's in the city available for development. As far as I'm concerned. So, I mean, I, that is really inspirational to see that set right there, um, in that corner.
Yep.
Excited. I hope we can get it done. Be great.
So the, the discussion about loops within the city, that was a good, good segue. So I, I've, you've heard me talk. We talked about the green line a lot, the green line extension of, along Lawrence Road and the blue line I mentioned earlier. So I kind of wanted to give kind of a holistic view of where this is headed. So take this, this map kind of with a grain of salt, knowing that the lines that are on here are representative only of conceptual connections. But, um, you know, we have the green line that goes from Traveler's Rest eventually, hopefully will eventually go probably close to the state line and then we'll go all the way down to Lawrence County. So that would be the main spine. The Swamp Rabbit Trails, we know it. Um, the blue line, also known as Hencappy Path in some sections, uh, peels off at, in Cleveland Park and goes down currently dead ends. There's a gap between Pleasantburg Drive and, um, Malden Road where it goes towards Conestie. That would be the blue line. So a larger picture of that shows it kind of connecting back to the green line at CI Car. We have a line that will peel off at Unity Park, could eventually lo- loop back through some of our mill districts and tie back into the blue line. And then we have, um, the orange line, which already has a, a short section that's up in the county near Swamp Rabbit Cafe, into Hampton Station. There's a, an abandoned rail line that takes it right into the, the top side of the North Main area. And that would, oops, and that would tie back down through the North Main neighborhood and tie back into the green line, um, providing a really great loop and connecting that part of the city that isn't currently connected. And so there are kind of larger connections and larger mentality about our naming conventions that we are looking at just to, to keep you in the loop.
This may be on your next slide, but I, I, you know, I can't, and I wish John DeWorke was here. But, um, I cannot emphasize enough to you the pleas I hear from the North Main community to get connected to the Swamp Rabbit Trail. They just aren't now. And, and, uh, been asking a very, very long time. And I would see that, that neighborhood connectivity as being a very high priority.
Yep. And it wa- it was one of the top priorities for, um, top projects that was listed as part of our Trails and Groomways Master Plan, and it still holds true to today. We have a.
But it just hadn't gotten done.
It hasn't gotten done. And so the, the county is, um, looking at the e- extension of that along that rail corridor actively. And so I think it's be- going to become a really real, um, connection that can happen in the, the short term.
So when you say they're looking at it actively, does that mean, what I recall from the green line being stalled to some degree was an issue of getting right of way. When you say they're, and this is, I mean, you may not be able to answer this, I understand. They're looking at it actively. Does that mean they are actively pursuing the right of way necessary to connect North Main to the Swamp Rabbit Trail along that path they have planned?
I'd be happy to get you an update.
Yeah. I mean, I just, it's been four or five years I've been hearing about it, so.
It is it, I'm, in understanding, we probably don't have the money to do it. But is it time to reopen conversations with Country Club and South Pleasantburg Nursery?
I think there's no better time than now on a lot of these things.
But, I mean, things have changed. Leadership at Country Club has changed. They were so against it. I think there may be some, except for the errant drives that, uh, that will hit some fifteen.
You won't find those. Meaning they don't have, not you can't find.
I think if that's a priority.
But, I mean, looking at old plans, there's plenty of room right up there, right next to Pleasantburg.
That's right.
And there's plenty of room under the bridge by the nursery. But we may want to reopen those conversations with them.
My understanding is there was, um, with or without a city representative, there may be, without, there was some dialogue in the spring. I don't know if, I don't know if it was poised to go somewhere or still to where, still where it's been over the years.
Yeah, because Chris Riley killed it ten years ago.
Maybe, but, um, anyways.
We have some advocates that are, are really supportive of the idea and, and, um, I would be happy to pursue that if that's a priority at councils.
And you could use, you could use Will and I as advocates, smaller, starting voluntarily.
Yeah, let me think. Some, I, I'll try to think of who was either having that conversation or planning to do it, just so we start from the last.
Sure.
Spot.
Sounds great.
If we're able to build all this, what do you, I mean, you may not know the answer to this, but just guessing, what do you think that'll raise our house level? Trail?
Big number, right? That'd be a big number.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I think that not setting the goal and everybody have, being within walking distance of a trail is a bad goal to have. And so I, I, I don't know that number. I can, I can run something. I, obviously that would depend on our annexation plans as well.
Okay. No, I don't, I mean, don't, don't worry about it. It's fine. But I am, as we go forward, I am, I am interested in trying to raise that, that, the percentage of, of houses that have access and proximity to these trails. Because I, I think it's, I think it's one of the great things about the city. So the more we can, the more we can put it where, um, you know, everybody can access it better.
Yep, I agree.
Yeah, I think we should probably also include parks in that. We had that analysis a while back, but, I mean, when, when you throw parks into it, it makes the number looks a little bit better.
Well, I, I'd like to know the park figure, but I'd also like specifically to make sure we have.
And is it quarter of a mile?
Quarter of a mile is a, is a pretty typical walking distance that we look at.
A fifteen minute walk.
And so.
Means you take an, an hour to walk a mile?
It's a leisurely, leisurely walk.
It's a stroll, is strolling.
I'm, I'm not walking.
So to kind of put a, a bookend on this, if, um, you know, are there any trail bike or mobility priorities that, that we didn't kind of touch on today? And from your guys' perspective, what's, what's the next big idea that we should be looking at? I have a couple of other initiatives that we're looking, um, kind of actively looking at, highlighted there would be the master plan update potentials, I think are, are going to become ever important.
Yeah, I mean, I, I just have a few questions at first.
Sure.
Um, so we talked about, all right, who owns the maintenance of the trail? Us or the county?
We, so there are, there are points that it kicks from the city to the county. So for, to, to kind of nutshell it, from Willard Street, just north of Unity Park, to the Lawrence Road Bridge.
Okay.
Is the city. Everything in between those two areas is the city.
Okay.
The, the extension that just happened from the Lawrence Road Bridge to, that will eventually go to I Car and to Malden. That is the only section that is wholly in city limits that is owned and operated by Greenville County.
And county is responsible for patrolling it per se? Um, I just want to make sure as we dream big and all that, we, you know, we've got to include the staff bandwidth to do what, what falls into our responsibility for maintenance and if there's any patrol. Um, separation of uses on the trail. So I don't know if y'all are getting any calls. I'm getting calls by people worried about getting hit by bikes and getting hit by skateboards on the trail. So help me out legal. Are skateboards prohibited on the trail or?
They're prohibited in the CBD, but I don't know that they're prohibited on the trail.
Right, so I think motorized skateboards would be considered a motor vehicle. To, uh, traditional skateboards would not. So that would be my interpretation.
Well, motorized bikes, we allow motorized bikes.
So e-bikes are in a different classification under state law and class one and class two e-bikes, which the motor kicks off at twenty miles per hour, which is the current speed limit on the trail.
Yeah.
Are permitted. Um, class three, which kick off at twenty-eight miles per hour, not permitted.
I just, I, I don't want to restrict use. What I'm saying is I think the, the more popular it gets and the better you mark, you know, the safer it gets. There's this illusion of safety, um, no matter what, and people walking with earbuds in and, and all those things that we talk about. I just wonder at some point if it's, it's time to consider separation of uses on the trail. You know, different lanes, whatever. That's, I could see that coming. I know a lot of people, not a lot, but I do get calls about people getting jer- you know.
Yeah.
Startled when someone comes up behind them. So like to have that consideration as we grow. I did not hear you mention, um, any projects for lighting under the, the underpass under Church Street, uh, between, and maybe just clues, I'm getting all confused, between, um, CSP and the Falls Park.
I, I did have a.
Did you have something on that? What, are we doing lighting for that? Okay, sorry, I missed it. Great.
Yeah, we'll be tying.
Lots of room for improvement.
Tying into the lighting in Cancer Survivors.
Okay, good. That's great.
I, I think, I think the best way to get skateboards off the trail is to build skate, so to use skate.
I think people are using it to get from point A to point B. I mean, they, they have a commuter look to them. They're going to a job or whatever.
Yeah, I mean, frankly, I'm, I'm not too concerned based on my knowledge now of skateboards. I mean, I'm down there a lot. I see very few. I think your odds of getting hit by a fast-moving bike is exponentially higher.
Yeah, it's all of the above. And it's just, you got people walking that don't want to get knocked in. And then, uh, the only way I'd do it is to have separate lanes. Just maybe a long-term thing to consider.
And ju- just, uh, a general comment. So Knox, I don't know if you remember twenty years ago, being in TR when we opened up that trail, sitting with Joe, uh, Joe Dill. And the public kind of thought we were a little bit crazy. They didn't know what trails were. They didn't understand it. We had no trails, but I don't think anybody can, could have imagined at that time that we'd be talking about this. I mean, this is unbelievable. Um, and, and I think we should be very proud of.
It was something, people said that's some Hilton Head does.
And, and it was, it was also a tram trailer.
That doesn't make it bad.
It's pretty do it, we should do it too.
But one big idea that, this is a thirty-year idea, would be as we began continuing to annex into the Textile Villages on the west side, it would be really cool to have not just a, a bike trail, but more of a greenway, uh, that connects those mill villages.
Linear park.
A linear park. Uh, I mean, I think the land is there. And, uh, very similar to what Boston has done with their Emerald Necklace, uh, that would be really cool.
Yep.
I, I felt like, yes, any other places to touch and everything, we've already talked about it. But I do think West End Village, the mill, connection between the mills, great opportunity for a lot of partnerships, public and private. Even an opportunity to work with the Partner District. I think we should. And, uh, and I think again, getting that connection down Pendleton Street from Academy Street is so important. Because that's one of those connects, and if we just widen the sidewalk, we just widen the sidewalk in that section of Pendleton. I think day one, you'll have people in business, people walking, using, using already on the street. And you'll see businesses pop along the way too. I think it'll have a huge impact quickly. We've seen that, a dense renovation down there. You see a lot more of that too. I think we get a lot of bang for the buck.
That is amazing. That's incredible.
Couple of quick thoughts. That first, the very first slide, I mean, you'll have to go back to it. But, but it basically has an, an infographic that says, are you going to go back?
Oh, I will, just so we can refresh.
I've never, I, I never thought of this. I wouldn't have if it weren't for the presentation, but I thought for what it's worth, one more slide back, one more slide back. So make alternative forms of mobility more acceptable and appealing. And it could have stopped there. But then it says to reduce reliance on cars. So it makes sense, but if we're not well-positioned now to track and monitor that. So in five and twenty-five years from now, we can say, because I know the first part's happened. I mean, it's more accessible, more appealing. But, you know, I don't know for sure it's reducing reliance on cars. I also don't pretend to know how we begin to track that. But all that is there purposely. So I would just want to see us be able to say, oh, by the way, it's great. And it does in fact reduce reliance on cars. Um, so that's one thought. And then the second thought, maybe one slide more, two slides more. So I think this would just be even more powerful than the power found in that slide. But when I, when I see this, you know, I thought, man, where, where are we after all the annexation? We used to be twenty-eight square miles. Now we're like thirty. I think that's made even more meaningful when one factors in how tightly, how condensed, intensely packed we are. So I think, I think seventeen miles within ci- our city limits is much bigger deal than seventeen miles. Then Ken had a good question about the number of homes. So, so the perspective that we might layer on this slide, either because of our unique size or in comparison to other aspirational cities, on a pro-rata proportionate basis, I think would be helpful.
Okay.
We could also do it every time, right? You could say seventeen miles and ten years ago, we were one point seven miles. Anyways.
Thank you.
Next time you're bored, you can beef up this slide. It's a good slide, but you know.
And you, you may be able to try to guess commuter numbers by just doing surveys. Figuring out who's, who's using a bike trail to commute now. And quite frankly, if you do it right, you can also plant seeds of people that, hey, you never thought about that.
Yes, sir. So I do have two things I did not mention, and I, I think we're out of town. But the, um, I, I do have a trail survey that I've developed. It's a, it's a digital survey. The plan is to actually set up stations on the trail during weekdays and weekends to capture user data. I'm planning to do that in the fall and in the spring so that we have.
Touchboard, whatever.
It'll be on iPads. And so I'll, I'll utilize.
Just a QR, QR thing. She run by and hit it.
We could, yeah. And so the goal is to get people to stop so that if they have questions, they can, but it, it has, um, demographic information. It has economic impact information of what people are spending on the trail, what they've spent to access the trail, uh, access points and, and everything in between. And then, um, part of my mobility meetup initiative, I'm, I'm planning on hosting a how to become a bike commuter, um, kind of tips class and so.
Once you put it, that's city council signed from twenty seventeen, right there, the, uh, stall residents.
Where's the, the historical and cultural impacts? Anything that we do in the west side of town.
Yes, ma'am.
You've got to include the cultural and historical, um, facts. Because a lot of this stuff has been here for years and we don't need to lose the history of it. Because there is a wonderful, um, uh, program that they have that gives the history of all of the mill villages. So I'm saying, even though we're talking trails, where, where they pass, they're passing by historical stuff.
Yes, ma'am.
So it needs, needs to be in there.
Yep.
And maybe one final thought I have, uh, as kooky and cheesy as it sounds, but like, you know, for those that use. like, you know, for those that use the trail. I mean, I wish there was a way, and maybe this is a Beth thing, I don't know. I wish there was a way for us to. Yeah, there's a, like, it obviously brings people together, gets them out and gets them moving, but like in different sections of the trail, the same folks are creatures of habit and they're always there. And while I'll be the first to confess as a trail user, I don't know everybody's name. I feel like I know everybody I see because they're the same people.
Did you meet Dorothy?
And I said.
Pass each other.
We do council business on the.
All the time.
But, you know. It makes you feel like a closer and safer community, even if you don't know the people, because it's just a friendly and warm, there's that guy and that that lady or whatever the case is, and it's some cool way to somehow.
What's your kooky cheesy idea?
Name tags?
And on that point, if I had to think of one council member that would never use the words kooky and cheesy, I would say Will would never say.
I didn't use.
Kalen, you store patina to talk about.
Well, I said patina earlier. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Kalen.
I can't tell you how much we, I mean, I'm sure every council member hears all the time. It is the pride and joy. You know, the city's very proud of it and people love it, love it.
I would encourage us, Beth, to push this very heavily and to show people how successful the trail is.
Plus a tutorial.
That do biking and trailing, we need to be inclusive of them because they can help us to make this this greater. I mean, you got a lot of walking girls, walking boys, walking, you know, trails, bicycle here, bicycle there. You know, that's a wonderful thing. Plus, we have our own children at our community centers who are doing bikes. So we ought to make sure that they are inclusive. Oh, yeah. Not only that, they can earn their own bike by doing certain chores and doing certain things. They get a, they get a hat, a whole nine year. They've been doing that for several years, so let's don't mess it up.
Thank you, Kalen, very much. We appreciate the update. And council will be continuing to update you on this over the next few months. Prior to budget priorities for next year, as we start thinking about the next things that we want to invest in related to the trail. Thank you.
Thank you.
Here, council, you have eight items discussed in executive session. Staff, there's four, seven are all under STC thirty dash four, that's seventy A two. Development agreement regarding Grace's Plaza, addendum to Camper Town Plaza DA, intergovernmental agreements related to NCIPs, update on potential contractual arrangements agreements around the location of City Hall, purchase of property on South Pleasantburg for use as open space, purchase of property on Glen Road for use as open space, contracts for naming rights to certain elements of Unity Park, and lastly, under subsection A one, discussion of employment matters.
Still moving.
I played a front nine.
I will come get staff as needed.